How many kids you have?
Awesome.
You need to cry.
All right, six o'clock, we'll call the regular meeting order. I guess as far as the agenda. Can we move just that exempt session towards the end? That way we get all our other stuff.
Yep, we can just skip over it and we can do all personnel if you want at the end, or we can go ahead and do the resignations and contracts in order and then just do the exempt session at the end for sure.
Good.
And also, just so you know, if we get to principal reports, they have middle school orientation things. And Rob said if we get to his portion, just he'll do it when he gets here, so we can just come back then.
Whatever. Okay, so we have a motion to approve the agenda.
So will we?
Second? Anyways, the I, say no. Gender is approved. About consent items. Any questions throughout the consent items? Looking at the activity funds. When do they have to be?
June thirty.
June thirty.
Yeah.
What's the stat tech team on set?
That was. The what?
Is it still a club or?
No, they haven't done anything with it for a couple of years now. It was when we went one to one. Mr. Padgett developed a group of. Interviewed a group of kids like they were job interviews and this group of kids helped with technology issues like more day to day things, you know, research, things like that. But then if it got too deep and they couldn't handle it, then he did it. So it was just a way for them to learn more technology things. One year. They were building computers for community members if they wanted it. You may remember that or not. And we did a few and that's like the leftovers of it. So.
I think they designed our movie, our house. They designed it and gave them.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And they built a few, you know, home computers. Part of the static team, that's what's left.
Other questions for anybody? Okay, so yeah, so the class of twenty two, last year's class had a balance of hundred nineteen dollars. And the stat tech team had six twenty seven, so that'll go to the student council fund. So do we have a motion to prove the movement of the account balances for the class twenty two and the stat tech team, student council fund and also the remaining set items? So we have a second?
Second.
Hello, the favor say, let's say no. Set items are approved. For respondents.
Just wanna recognize teacher appreciation week. We had that last week. Really, we called it staff appreciation week because there's days all throughout the year, classroom appreciation, school nurse, hair professional, principal, everything. So we just lump it all together and our PTO did an absolutely fabulous job of supporting our teachers and our staff, I should say. They made catered in lunch one day. They had cinnamon rolls, like goodie bags, popcorn. Massages, oh, the Italian soda bar. That was fun. Massages. You didn't like them?
Yeah, I love them.
I love, I'm like now addicted to Italian soda. Like we haven't heard say, they're fabulous, I think. And anyway, they just, we really were, we're very fortunate to have our PTO. They really were very kind to our staff and we appreciate that. And just a special, a big thanks to all, to everybody. It's been a long year and May is hot. I mean, we're all, I mean, I'm sure you guys get it too. We're just dragging to the finish line next week. So we're just really thankful for everybody. And and then it's also school board recognition month. And so, I mean, same with you guys. We're so appreciative of you guys. And the volunteer work that you do, I mean, this is a job and you are volunteers. And so I'm just really thankful that I have a board like you guys that we get to work with. I think Julie and I and probably Cass and Rob would agree that we are very fortunate. We've heard lots of horror stories. And we don't have any of our own to share. I mean, we've got a fantastic board to work with and our community is very fortunate to have.
My dad a public forum, looks like. Super you're up.
As you know, the email that I sent has just two broad topics that are related to chat GPT and the AI general environment contact. But I want to start with a couple little analogies here before I get to some of the content in there. Because I don't know where any of you are at, and that includes the staff and everything in discussing these items, but we're jumping right into them where I happen to teach. So I hope that's going on in a variety of places here. Social media does not require any documented proof for any position anyone wants to take. You pretty much have a first amendment right to say whatever you want to say on on there. And the reason I bring that up initially is because while I taught in a variety of disciplines, I'm pretty much down to political science now because that's where we'd have a lot of the enrollment where I happen to teach. I don't know if it's because it's Maryland and close to DC or what, but I get a lot more in there. And so I'm quite accustomed to students believing that in the discussions, they can post anything they want because they have a first amendment right to say whatever they want, which they do. But in academia, as I explained to them multiple times in class, emails in the instructions, it's in the rubrics that we are provided by the department. When you take a position, you have to use facts, actual documented facts in support of that position because it develops skill sets. And the facts have to come from quality dependable sources. Those are all in the grading rubrics. And eventually, I'm finally getting a higher percentage of students that understand, although I did have one complaint to the department about me in the class that just ended last week. So I explained, the head of the department said, okay, copy me. But tell this student what we so I laid it all out. I said, it's the same thing of creating emails and instructions and everything. The student, fortunately, it was like week two, stepped right up, got it, served as an example and all but about five of them started in class, started at the twenty sixth, started doing it. Kurt started really proud about the fact they did. I said, now outside of academia, if you want to go back to just saying whatever you want to say, fine. But these are skill sets and being able to support your position that are going to be important. Okay, I bring that up now because, but the chat GPT. I did attend that online forum and I can, if anybody wants to see them, provide like the PowerPoints things, their variety things that they did provide. Because I'm allowed to download those and and access them. I'll only give you a couple of examples. Because by this fall for the classes, they're still trying to decide if they want to incorporate a classroom activity so the students can figure out that not all the information you go out and using the program is accurate. So they provided a couple of examples, very specific examples in there. A third of step by step details were wrong, totally inaccurate, provably inaccurate. And another aspect of that, they had great perfectly formatted list of sources. Most of which did not exist. Fortunately, we happen to use turn it in, which is doing its level best to stay current with the various possible things that could happen. So anyway, there are more details, but if that would be useful in any conversations you're having, I'd be happy to provide that for you. The other thing is generally AI. There is an upside and a downside, but it's still based on being able to have provable information from quality sources regardless of the area. But there's the upside because I have seen a study. It happened to be a medical study, but there might be others. It's just the only one that I've seen for now. The medical studies showed that AI could look at a whole variety of symptoms and they had a higher percentage of getting the diagnosis correct. Individuals might tend to know more about some symptoms than others. In other words, they might not get them all put together in a way that could get the same accurate that AI could do. So there are some instances where that could work. But your brain has to be able to understand what it is that's going on and not just accept it because this computer is doing it. Okay, that's an upside. There are obviously a lot of downsides, and that's why you keep seeing it on the news a lot to try to regulate it as best you can as we are trying to do with the first example where I started in academia and turning in. And there are ways of working on it. But I do have examples with PowerPoints, you know, some other things that were used in what we saw in the print screen that I showed you that we did have. If anyone would be interested in looking at those, because I have them all downloaded on my computer, so I'm studying things. To start various conversations, because they're going to have to go in a variety of directions, but you're going to have to have, not just in academia here. The public is going to have to also be aware of these things and a variety of ways. If any of these would be helpful for you, I'd be happy to to provide them to you. So that's generally speaking, on a very complex topic is as far as I wanted to go with it. If I hit on some analogies, analogies you can relate to. Great. If I didn't, I always try it again somehow.
Pressing the reports. It's like Rob's gonna have to go first. Couple lengthy things here because there's been a lot going on over the last month or so in the elementary, but some additions to our team. Jill Halter is going to be our shared counselor, originally called Baxman Go and Baxter. That position may change a little bit. Currently, it's just a shared position in the elementary, but you and Robert are working together to try and figure out how to get some middle school students involved with that particular counselor. So I think that's going to be a great fit for Jill, social transition out of the preschool and into that role. So we're excited for that. Abby Barr is going to be our new kindergarten teacher. She's a new teacher, but has some survey experience in Newton for the last semester or so. And she's a delight. She's a great catch. So we're really excited for her. She actually came in yesterday during that day and subbed and sat in a couple of our Saturday meetings. So that was nice to kind of immerse her into our our system for that day, but she's she's great and she'll be fantastic. Last week, we had field day, which is a great afternoon for our kids. Sixteen different stations that our PE teachers brand gets through, just an awesome afternoon that our kids thoroughly enjoy. Fishing trip was on Monday, so we took the entire day and went out. It's always great to see how many parents and grandparents go out and go fishing with those kids. And for some, it's one of the first times they have gone fishing or the first time they'll catch a fish. And there's so many great memories that go along with that. So some updates on summer school. We have invitations out. We invited twenty four students K two. So we cut it off at two. We can't get the numbers that we want. We started, we will invite some third graders if necessary, but we're trying to limit it to the K two. And right now we have twelve people committed. We're hoping for somewhere between sixteen and twenty. So I think we'll get close to that all the way there. One of the biggest successes over the last month is our books for fun fundraiser that raised over twenty thousand dollars for books for our elementary kids. So what that's going to entail is that we're going to get, or we do have just today, one thousand five hundred and seventy one books that'll be distributed out to our kids. And we're going to do that and an opening on the last day of school. So every one of our elementary kids will go home with books for the summer through donations from within the community, way out within the community, grandparents, uncle, dates, whoever that got out to.
How many books did you say has one thousand?
One thousand five hundred and seventy one that will be distributed just to kids. There's other little programs that were that were part of that, that teachers have a hundred dollars that they get to spend in the store for books. Kids that raise the most money have a hundred dollars they can spend within it. So there'll be more books and more prizes beyond what just is in house, but every kid will receive at least five books going home on the last day of school. So it's pretty awesome. I'm pretty proud of that, that whole thing and how that came about. We just kind of jumped all in and just said, let's try it. And once again, the community and everybody else pours it all in and here we are. So.
Are they still out there?
They're out there. So that's awesome. But to everybody that made that all happen. Fast reading scores, elementary wide, seventy four percent, we're at benchmarks, our highest number since we started taking that for the spring portion since two thousand fourteen. So since we started collecting that data. So kudos to our kids and all the hard work that they put in. It's the highest it's been. ISAS reports, which I know more and more will come out over the next couple of months on July and then again in August, but preliminary reports, we had seventy one percent of our kids proficient in reading, seventy five percent of our kids proficient in mathematics. And that's three through five. So there are so many things to celebrate over the last month or so, some big things, little things, but ultimately I'm most proud of just the work that our team has been together, the elementary team, they step in when they need to do it, when they need to kind of build that that foundation of a team and us working together to make our kids successful. And they stepped up to the challenge and couldn't be more proud of our teachers and paras and everybody else involved that that make our kids successful every day. So thanks to them and you guys.
I would add also, it's very successful. I'm bringing music.
Yes.
Oh, thank you for bringing that up. Yep.
Very good.
Yeah.
It's always just fun to see the community. I mean, people love it. And I mean, kids were dressed in, it was like a red, white, blue theme and it was just darling. And the songs were great. The kids sang. I mean, you could understand them. The lighting was good. It was just, it was really good.
Let's get Rob for now. Now we'll move on to personnel. Resignation, the contracts.
So Whitney Bose is resigning as our PE teacher and she's taken a job in her home district where her kids go. She lives in Ranger?
Right.
France and got a job at BCG. So I mean, we love her and we're sad to see her go, but we totally get it. I mean, it's her backyard and her kids go to that school. So but we found some new people and we're super excited about it. Abby Barr is, do we do the resignation first or and then?
You can read them all. We'll take resignation separate.
Okay. And so then we have a contract for Abby Barr, who'll be our new kindergarten teacher, as Mr. Housebreak said. Jennifer. When you're gonna get one of those.
I think it was meow.
With with meows gate. She's coming to us from California. And they have a couple of kiddos as well that they're bringing with them. So we're excited to have them and they have family, something in the Midwest and her husband got a job in Des Moines. And so they were looking for small towns around and somebody recommended Baxter to her and they came and visited and ended up. Have they bought a house?
I don't know that.
I'm not, I'm not sure on that. And and then she actually was a teacher and had a science endorsement. And so we were like, hey, do we have a deal for you? Wow. So yeah, we kind of stumbled upon her, but we're so thankful that that worked out. And then Ryan Hermes, Hermes, and Dex actually probably met him. I haven't yet. He's going to be a PE teacher and then take over as strength and conditioning coach and assistant football. And so he'll be a nice addition to the staff, brand new grad out of Grand View, football player at Grand View. And then Jeremy Moffett, who's already our baseball coach and they have kids in the district. His wife is a para here. He's going to be our social studies teacher and he is fantastic. We're very excited about him as well. Former attorney turned teacher. So hopefully don't even like call on him. Hey.
Theoretically.
Theoretically. So anyway, we're just really excited about the new teachers we're bringing in. So I mean, we hate to see them go, but sometimes the new staff comes in and, you know, just brings fresh blood. So I guess we'll prove those separately.
So we, we have everything filled in?
I think we do at the moment, don't we, has? Your fault. I don't think Rob has anything open. We're currently advertising for gender. We've done some shuffling around and combined some positions. And so we're looking for a gender position, but we've got a couple applicants. I was just chatting with Bill about that today. He's got two resumes. So he's kind of and we're running an ad in the Newton paper because, you know, teachers know to look at teach Iowa because we have to. But not everybody knows to look there. I mean, that's just not where some people would think to look for a position. So we're going to run an ad in the paper just to see if we can get any more applicants. But I mean, we're just saying what we have to look like these applicants. So those kind of sorting through those.
Well, Spanish probably be the same.
Hey, I mean, it seems to be working okay. And as long as those gals keep offering the program, I think. I mean, I, we could always advertise for it, but there's not really any more Spanish.
I don't think we've really lost that many numbers.
Yeah, I mean, I think kids are doing all right in it. And Rob, like as a parent, I haven't had any trouble with them, you know, I don't know. Your kiddos. And Rob is a administrator working with them, said they're fantastic to work with. And if there's ever a question, anything.
They're really attentive.
Yeah. So it's a pretty good little system we have.
So do we have a motion to prove resignations?
I will.
Push, do we have a second? Say I, I, let's say no. Resignations approved. Do we have a motion to approve the contracts listed? And then do we have a second? All of the favors today. Let's say no. Contracts are approved. Say one bump the exempt session down later to talk about salaries. It was on the twenty eighty agreements.
So they're pretty much the same, other than.
There's a couple we're gonna wait.
There's a couple we're waiting on. And then that Nevada one for librarian. Used to do it with Collins Maxwell, but we're basically just shifting it to Nevada. Do you want to speak a little bit about that?
Yeah, Nevada reached out to us and Collins Maxwell had decided they were going to stop the sharing agreement with our buildings and grounds, which is is fine. And so we just decided we're gonna just kind of end the sharing agreements between each other, just for now. I mean, not forever, but just for now. And so Nevada reached out and they were actually looking for someone who could share library. And so instead of going to Collins Maxwell, Greg will just partner with Nevada. So he has Nevada and PCM and Colbex Mago and then us. And then the highlighted ones are, do we, are we still waiting on something?
Yeah, those two.
Those are waiting on the them to approve it, right?
We didn't, they initiate them. So we have to wait for them to send it to us and we don't know. We put in the, you know, the exact dollar amount that will be paid and they didn't know what that was because at that time the counselor hadn't been hired yet. And they haven't settled on administrative salaries, which is what Wendy now gets. And so once they get those to us, I would imagine it'll be on our June, our our June meeting. So we basically initiate all of these. So that's why we have all these ready to go.
And then because we lost the buildings and grounds one, we're kind of shopping around a little bit for some districts and we have some who are possibly interested. And also the special ed director, I mean, currently I do it with GMG and it's fine, but we have someone in mind who would be fantastic if we could get a deal worked out. So if we can get a deal worked out with that district, I'll just stop doing it and then this person will take it over and she's awesome. So if we can get it worked out, it would be fabulous. So and then with that same district, I'm kind of talking about potentially trying to share some buildings and grounds, just almost more like a collaborative relationship with, you know, with our bill, he has all those, he's a trained electrician plumber and HVAC. And then so he can help out with, you know, if they have a project and then they have people who have the electrician things and that sort of thing, or I don't know for sure, but something to that effect. So if we can just have some collaboration between the two districts, we can have that relationship. And we can still get the operational sharing, but then also have you know, a team of people that, you know, are building call resources and they can call and, you know, if Bill's gonna help them with the plumbing problem. You know, they'll purchase the stuff, but he could use his expertise without charging however many dollars per hour plumber charges. You know, so it can just help both of us. And if we need a electrician, they could, we could use theirs. So we're trying to find somebody who can work together with us on that kind of thing, but we don't have anything official yet. So probably next month.
For that city Baxter and the SRO, is there operational sharing?
For us, we get two, two, two FTEs, so roughly fourteen thousand dollars for that.
We've had that.
We started that last year.
Our first.
This year, this current year, right? And cities don't get the operational sharing because it comes from the Department of Education and not from other departments. So I don't know if there's anything that the city itself could apply for. But they don't get.
Probably benefits them a little bit in salary for him, but they.
Yeah, except for that, I don't know that. I think that they still pay his salary and then he just kind of perks himself here.
Is he here a day a week?
He's here every day for a couple hours or an hour. Like he has a little rolling desk that he has parked down by Rob's office. And then he he's in the lunchroom quite a bit and that he has a, please, it's not a, I don't think it's like a drug sniffing dog. It's just a dog. Rookie is his name, super cute dog. But he brings rookie and they walk the halls. And so he's pretty good with like building rapport with the kids, but he's been such a viable resource. I mean, it's just been so nice when we have stuff happening to just, I can text Bill and be like, Bill, I need you. Or Bill, are you here? Like, I'll be there for minutes. Or, I mean, it's just a it's a godsend.
And the relationship building, I would think is.
For sure. Yes. His kids know him and he's easy to be around and likable and but he can. I've seen him like turn cop too. And it's, it's nice to have that side of him if you need that.
Did we get the, the, those operational sharing dollars, they come next year for the?
Yeah. So then like this next full year, we get all these from last or this year. This year, we're getting the ones from last year. So we're not, we're at twenty, is that right?
Twenty and we can.
You can only get twenty one. So we're, that's great. We're working on, you know, so if we were to be able to get that building to grounds one. It would put us over, but you don't get the extra. There was some legislation that they talked about raising it to twenty five, but it didn't pass. But they said, just keep, keep your pressure up on your legislature. It's maybe next year.
And they actually lowered the amounts that you could get for each one. We're talking about raising that up, but that didn't pass either.
It used to be everything that's worth two used to be worth three and everything that used to be worth five is worth four. The only one they changed superintendent used to be worth eight. Now it's worth nine. But then all the rest of them, they lowered. So and they've added, SRO was a new one they added last year. And there's a couple other different ones we could have. There's some, we have the counselor, but there's a
psychologist.
Like, yeah, there's a psychologist, social worker kind of thing. And there's also work-based learning. But no matter what combination of them you use, you only get twenty one. But it's still twenty, twenty or twenty one is still at seven thousand dollars, like hundred forty thousand dollars tish extra that we have. Who wouldn't?
So the one we would be doing is transportation director for Nevada. So the one we would be doing is transportation director Nevada. Librarian Colfax. Bingo. PCM librarian, Nevada librarian. K D resources and the S R O.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we have two more that were coming, we just don't know the specifics yet. For sure.
Make a motion to approve those operational.
A second.
For the twenty eighty agreements.
Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, let's say no. When the, the agreements are. On the gas diesel bids.
Should be fairly easy.
Not a lot of competition.
Nope, and it went down last year, so.
Great. Yeah.
I was a little bit surprised that it went down that much. They're really good to work with, I was surprised, cause uh, I sent it to him. Uh. Eight, eight thirty in the morning and I had it back by the same day. Um, by like eleven AM. I was, yeah. Jay, Jay Christie is his name.
Oh, yeah. From.
Yeah.
Yeah. I didn't know that, that's not all I know, but he's. Been really helpful.
Yeah, so yes, the. FS is the only bid.
Yeah, I even reached out to. It's funny, because I even reached out to Colfax Bingo PCM and you. To see who they sent their bids out to, because I was taught that we had to send out to at least three and we may not get them to reply, we don't have any control over that. And. Newt can reach back to me, they're like, we've never done this before, I'm like, well, you're not doing very helpful then, so I actually had to provide them with. Like.
They wanted your shit.
Yeah, they did, they wanted my request for proposal with what we usually send. Like, well, and then PCM and Colfax Bingo didn't even reply to me who, who they get, so.
No.
I would imagine if it ever comes a time when we don't have anybody, we'll just be taking our bus to the gas station. Which will be a.
So right now, does this place provide a tank for us?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And I think they charge us like maybe a hundred dollars a year for that tool.
Hmm.
And then they come and fill it once a week.
From the six.
Yeah. Extra oil used to, used to quote it for us and then they decided they came down and told me that they. This was back when Brian and Karen had it, they won't be getting any money on it or anything, you know, and they didn't wanna quote it anymore. Um. But they might be interested in putting the diesel and I said, well, we would need to have a tank for the diesel and they could provide us with a tank, so.
So we have a motion to approve the gas diesel bids from FS. Second, those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Let's say no. Gas diesel bids are approved. Bread and milk bids.
It tastes, send me some, so I, I was reading through them and Julie, of course you can chime in, but. Case put the red box, the red X and the ones that she was recommending, so she's recommending can of gold for the bread. It's the best price and then the milk, I think was.
A E.
It was also, I believe, the best price.
And she's requesting the firm bid, which is what we used to do all the time until. It was either the COVID year or. Right after that, when um. Amy was here, she suggested that we go with the escalator, you know, then it kind of fluctuates and we did, we did cash in for like one year. Cause then it kind of floats a little bit, but you're not stuck in, you know, a firm bid and so. But on the flip side of that, if you have a firm bid, you'd know where it's gonna be because the escalator could actually.
Make it way more, yeah.
Yeah, so I think we got by that one year and then like COVID hit and. We, it, it's such a volatile market right now, but she's asking for the firm bid.
Looks like they're the suppliers for this year too, right?
They are, yep.
It's like she said, we're at. Product concerns.
Yeah, Highland didn't even. They usually would bid it and it didn't even reply.
That's number three supplier state with Highland.
Oh, I'm sorry, milk, I know, milk. Yeah, they usually. Um. Yeah, and so they didn't, so sometimes um, I've had this issue happen where they have a turnover. So then you're sending it to one person who isn't that person anymore and so then somehow the, the bin request gets fallen through the cracks and. The A E's been really great for us, they just have over the years, they provide us with, you know, the coolers and everything and.
We have a motion to approve bread and milk bids. And second?
Second.
Let's say aye? Bread and milk bids are approved.
I know, really, I was already signing them. It is a lot of kiddo, that was, I think we have nine on here, we've got a couple more next month and um. Alright, so open enrollment in, so we have Amy Paul and Joseph Paul for their son Wayne in kindergarten from Colfax Bingo. Chelsea Fields for her son Aiden Beach kindergarten from Newton. Tessa Graham and Benjamin Fran for their daughter Kennedy from Newton kindergarten. Cody and Casey Snyder for their son Weston kindergarten from Newton. Danielle and Ryan Taber for their son Mason kindergarten from Newton. Brian, Brianna Van Gorp for her son Kingston kindergarten from Newton. Hannah and Roy Williams uh, for their daughter. Lincoln, Lincoln kindergarten from Newton. Emily Snyder for her son Paul kindergarten from West Marshall. Uh, Meredith Hibbs for her daughter Sydney eighth grade from Marshalltown. Keith and Sarah Pittman for their son Caleb kindergarten from Newton. Aaliyah Payton for her daughter Helena Thomas kindergarten from Newton.
How many of those kindergarten kiddos are, are any of them here already for preschool, you know?
Only, yeah, there are.
Probably.
Maybe just one or two that isn't.
Really?
Yeah, and I was just gonna say, kudos to Amanda Mormon. I mean, she knocked it out of the park, so. In my world, it, it would be awesome to have the open enrollment forms filled out at kindergarten roundup parent meeting, right? Because they know um. That they're, I mean, they're here, so that we know if they're open enrolled and so she handed out the forms then and got a lot of that like then. That's, this is the result of that, because it hasn't necessarily been done in the past and so then work. So then these are scattered throughout the summer as we catch them.
Well, some of them have siblings, you're already or.
Yeah, yeah.
Already enrolled.
Yeah, yeah, and some don't even know that they have to do this kind of thing because in preschool you don't have to. And so as we're going through the summer and getting ready for registration, we might stumble upon three or four or five of them like, oh crap. You know, we got even enrollment, so then you see them sort of straggling in over the next few months, so hopefully, you know, we've, we've got a lot of them.
You know roughly where we're at with kindergarten, like our.
I think that's supposed to be like thirty-six.
So that's good, cause it was.
It was like twenty-eight year old year.
We need six months.
Six more to be even with.
Graduating forty-two, so.
Okay, I'll go over there.
Okay. But doing great, so far so good.
That's right.
They're good T-ball players.
Recruit them from the other team.
Baby could be so kind at the games, parents like, who is that guy? We should send our kid there, like, yeah, bring him.
Do we have a motion to approve all of the open enrollments in?
Someone.
Second?
Second.
If you're in favor, say aye?
Aye.
The enrollment are approved.
Sydney Hibbs is a dance friend of my daughter's, so she's gonna be a great add, yeah.
Oh, that's fun, we have um, a. Somebody that I just talked to this week. Um, it's two kiddos and they, they play, one of them plays little kids like YMCA soccer with Baxter kids. And it's interesting, we're potentially coming, they're gonna take, well, I think they're at. Rob's staying tonight.
Oh, they have a middle school?
They have a middle schooler and a little one. So I mean, there's still more potential.
Why soccer in Newton?
Yeah, but they, the, the little one plays on the Baxter team with some Baxter kids or something.
Great.
I don't know, so um. Actually, I mute this thing, so every district one of us.
Yeah, I was just, we got one, two, three, four different districts, right?
And one of them's Mrs. Schneider's little guy, I mean, she's a teacher here, so.
Fund uh, ground facilities and transportation.
So um, Bill and Julie worked together on, Bill came off the list and Julie used the document, cause she doesn't trust us with this. It's got a lot of.
It's got a lot of moving parts.
And we've screwed them up before and get our hands slapped, so. Um. So anyway, um, some of these projects are already completed, but Bill put them in order of most important to least important. And um, and just, I want you to note down there at the bottom, he uh, worked with Hilliard, that's our supply company. And they um, they're wonderful, this is part of my uh, board report too, they met with us. Last week, two weeks ago, and they talked Bill through a summer schedule and how to organize his work and um, you know. How to, like, if he wants to wax all the floors, here's, realistically, here's how many you should be able to get done and it was just wonderful and just knowing he has a partner. Um, that, with experience who's here to support him, um, and he was able to get a quote for them to do both of our gym floors. For just slightly more than that other, FLR was gonna charge us to do just one.
And we normally have FLR.
Yeah, so like he just, kudos to Bill also, we're like shopping around, seeing, trying to get some best deals and Hilliard has been a, a great partner for us. So um, they can do, and we have the gym floors already scheduled, um, they're gonna come in June and we've worked with the ADs and the coaches and they're, you know, they're aware and. So it's just, we're excited about that.
I was, I thought it was great, that, that meeting that we set.
Yeah, Julie sat in with it too, with the, the budget part of it, just helping us um, go through.
But the way that they know, you know, if you have this many square feet, then they know it's, um, you have this many. Levels of wax on your floor and you gotta take it down to this many and then you put this many back on and then you do this again and then it's gonna take you this much time and this many people to do it.
It's.
Wow.
Yeah, I mean, so you can just establish your procedures, you know, and not feel like you're. Afraid you're not gonna get done through the summer or.
And they're just really helpful in, you know, planning of, as you clean rooms, you know, do you. I can't remember what they cited on, but you empty all the rooms and then clean them all and then clean the stuff, like they, they had procedure, I, I don't remember how it was. Um, what they decided on, but there's like a, a procedure that you should use to do that and they helped, you know, Bill and his staff. Navigate through that and so I, I just.
What do we have them do normally? Is this kind of like the?
Well, this is just a company that supplies our chemicals, but um. We were looking for somebody to help mentor our custodial staff and so. They came in for probably most of last year and, and this year, was it, or did they just start this year, or they sticking on the end of last?
At the end of last year.
About, about this time last year. We decided we need mentoring for our custodial staff and so um, Hilliard was willing to do that. And um, so they don't charge us for their service, but they just expect that we would buy some of their products and we buy mostly their products. Cause they're, the cost of them is not, it's about the same, so they might have one that costs a little bit more than somebody else, but then they have something else that costs a little bit less, so it, it's about the same. But they provide all this um, continuing education and so it's just been a great partnership. And um, they made plans to mentor, like have some PD for our, our janitors over the summer, like I, you know, they, they can stop in and there's. One of the guys, Eddie, yeah, like that's like.
One will do this, one will do this.
They're coming back because Bill's never actually been like the guy that's done that before and so this guy Eddie is the, the guy who's. Like knows really a lot about it, so he's gonna come and help him those first couple days to train Bill and the rest of the team. As in, this is how you do it, here's how you get it safely, here's how, you know, here's how you get it. However many layers of wax you need and so.
And that's two people are standing around waiting for one person to get done.
So they're like, Bill's doing this, Tammy's doing this, Craig's doing this and you're just, yeah, super efficient and, and so anyway. Um, we're, we're just really happy with that, so these are the um, projects Bill has said that we need to get done and. That's the. Forty-nine thousand, it's, and some change is what we set aside to, to do it.
Yeah, so I don't think there's anything that is surprising here other than the lighting. So now is probably your, your big concern right now is.
First up.
Um, where it says replace East Gym lighting with LEDs, the eighty-seven.
Right.
Yeah.
Place those about too long ago?
Um.
We talked about it.
We talked about it.
Things keep getting broken and the cages come down and so Bill said these will be. Like when, if they get kicked, it's not a big deal.
Yep.
So there won't be cages on them?
Well, no, I don't think there's actually even like a bolt.
I mean, like a. Strip of, you know, kinda like, you know, if you have LED lights at, at home or anything. Um, I don't quite know how it all works, but Bill seemed to think it was gonna be a great solution and it sounds like um. Six years in the recup that's just an electricity alarm.
Yeah, I think that he was thinking with um. Alliant Energy that we were gonna get a little more of a rebate than we're getting, we are getting some of a rebate, but I think he was thinking that we're gonna get more, but I don't know. Still fifteen hundred a year.
I think we got a rebate from them when we went some of the fluorescent.
I think we went like from T-twelves to T-eights or T-eights to T-fives or something like that.
So they're probably thinking.
You're not getting it again.
You should.
What sidewalks again?
So that's, so that's sort of below the, the dotted line, that's a wish list kind of a thing. Um, so if you pay attention, especially right out here, so the sidewalks broken up into, you know, what? Oh, three by three foot, would you say, maybe four by four and anyway, they're not level. You know, the ground has settled and so there's quite a step. So yeah, trip, yeah, it's a liability issue and. Um, when EMC, EMC comes every year and they walk around to see what our liability issues are or where we can be more efficient. And they, they haven't necessarily brought that up yet, I think because there's been snow on it or something before, but. Uh, it, it won't be long and they will, um, but he hasn't even gotten bids for that yet, that's just on the list. So that it's on your radar, sure. And same way with those, so you know, he's going in the order of hit of priority, you know, so those last three things are. Like the update, the water heater in the bus garage, it works, it's not very efficient, so it'd be nice to get a new one so we can have some more efficiency. And lower our bills that way, same way with the water heater and the mezzanine, you know. I already told you about that. Last month.
We have a water heater somewhere that wasn't even.
That's that one.
Okay.
So we don't necessarily have a backup. But he's been here for two years. Going on his third year and. We haven't needed it.
Yeah.
But at the same time.
We never do, it's just nice, if, if he had time and if we had money laying around, yeah, Bill could do it, so it's nice that.
Does that provide water, this water meter and the mezzanine?
It does the kitchen, so if something goes out in the kitchen, that's the back of like the, it would be the dishwashers and all that kind of stuff, it would.
Right now, it just sort of um, serves, serves as a holding tape, yeah, a holding tape, so. Like I said, we haven't needed it for two years, so it's.
It's not.
We need it, we need it fixed, but just know that. It might be pouring a lot of waters, hot water heater goes out, you know, we have to get through lunch or something. He's really handy and we have an equipment breakdown, yeah, so.
Kinda just have it on your radar, just in case.
Yeah. Every week out, you know. Yeah.
Well, they have some hundred and seven questions about the cookies, I had to answer every question on, I need to cookies and size of cookies. Well, they have some hundred and seven questions about the cookies. I had to answer every question on, I need to cookies and size of cookies on what your cookies are and how we did. Preventer can build and stall that and is he capable? For the kitchen. Same thing, lighting looks like they have labor included on there.
Yeah.
Or is he gonna?
Um, I, um, what did he tell me? Let me see what my own looks. Yeah, yeah, so. No, Bill, uh, yeah, Bill, let's see where it says twenty five forty two and it says labor to install. Bill says he can do that.
So we could subtract the twenty five forty two off of it. Yeah.
She's got eighty eight oh seven for the. Project, but I don't, I'm not following on that. The big sheet.
Yeah, now it's been. Where the what?
Where the eighty eight oh seven comes from off the big sheet here.
Yep. That's my writing, so it's been long enough that I can't remember now. Yep, it is, if you do, um.
Option one.
Okay, so the eighty eight oh seven. Is option two. Not including the nine hundred and fifty four dollar rebate. So, um. We need to take the nine fifty four off of the eighty eight oh seven. Um, because we'll get the rebate and then no labor, or if we decide to do the option one. Then we would take it off of that as well.
So there's.
And so the fact that I put in the eighty eight oh seven, I think that means that Bill wants to do the second one.
So it's all in the, it's all, they're both in the gym.
Both the East Gym, yep.
So the, the eighty eight, but you'd still take the twenty six hundred off for labor.
Right, this.
I'm not sure about that because um, it's a different kind of install than on that second one. Um, why don't I get that cleared up before you guys decide on that? And I can just email it to you what the, what.
Second one looks like called new fix. I mean, it will be the halo ones or whatever instead of. First option to use the existing.
Yes.
Fixtures and put LED bulbs in it, but then you're still have the.
You still have.
Guard.
Yes. Yes, and I think that's why Bill was okay with doing that labor. Because you'll see, you know, then they're gonna have to have, you know, uh. I thought I saw here, oh yeah, lift and labor recycling of old lamps and all that good stuff. So we. Don't have the means to recycle the old lamps, so. I think option two is labor included, not by bill.
Yeah, painting on there or is that just kinda figured in the?
Painting? You mean the, the annual painting, not, 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 oh yes, it's already figured in. If you look at the capital assets plan. Up above. See where it says, uh, over on your left hand side, um, miscellaneous, um, it's line fifteen. Over on the left, it says miscellaneous eight thousand plus eight thousand and gym floors, annual paint, ceiling tiles, you know, just. Like the miscellaneous stuff that we have to replace every year. We've already calculated that in every year.
Thirty thousand, we've already kinda got that accounted for.
Yeah, for sure. We, we have like stored that every year for, you know, we have it already, so. Look up above. I think we actually, what did I tell you like when I thought we had like maybe forty five, fifteen? And that saved.
So this, the cities are, are just being in half of that though, right?
Or, that's our understanding, right? So it's.
But we've like saved it up for all these years. So we're not coming up with thirty thousand.
Just for the five thousand match thing.
Yes, yep.
I haven't heard anything on that lately. Bryce was seeking the lead.
Yeah, and I don't know how they. Because they haven't showed us any bids, so I don't know if they're just guestimating it's gonna be sixty thousand or, and they're guestimating high. Because like us, they can't just, you know, pay off of somebody's guess. So I would imagine maybe it, it's they guess high. And when it actually comes in, we'll see where it lands, but it won't be over that as much. Yes. Yeah, we have, um. Thirty five thousand. For sure saved in that, uh, five thousand that's already set aside. Should probably give you a heads up. We had talked a couple of months ago about. Purchasing a, a van or a bus, um, we were. This is the year that we were, this coming up year, we were scheduled for a bus. Um, and talked to Deb and Kevin and all that. And at one point they were. Kevin was kinda wanting a used bus and a van. And then we, remember, we talked to him like, well, we don't even know that we're gonna have a bus driver to drive the bus if we get a bus, so I. Sort of put the next to that and said. We can go with a van, another fifteen passenger, twelve passenger van. The law says that it has to be used. So, um. We just had inspection last week and Verlin led us onto, um, Devonport Assumption, um, had a. Had two vans that they're wanting to get rid of because their insurance. Carrier won't provide them insurance for them anymore because they're. I'm not gonna get this right, but they're high in the middle, so they're, what do you, whatever you call that. High profile. Yeah, yeah, I guess. Uh, I felt like it was like a.
Like a tipping.
Like a, yeah, yeah, yeah. And we haven't had any issues with our insurance company and I mean.
Is that similar to the kind of van that, that newer white?
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Oh, okay.
But we haven't had any issues. Uh, so I feel like maybe. Because they're a parochial school, you know, they don't, maybe they aren't insured with EMC, you know, through, uh, cause they're not a public school or. Maybe it's some smaller company or something. I don't know, but I've been thick in the insurance the last couple of weeks and. They haven't said a word um, about it being an issue, so. We've called on those two vans. And they're at. Sixty.
Sixty.
Sixty and seventy thousand, seventy three thousand, right around there. And they're asking them thirty seven.
One of them is sixty thousand miles and one is seventy.
Yeah, no, the price is around thirty seven thousand for both, for each. And. That seemed high to me because I'm pretty sure that other one that we got was. Like maybe forty thousand.
Did we buy that one then?
You're allowed to, you have to buy yours. It was.
I know, I mean, so I said, I said to Deb, I said. Let me do some checking and see what the going rate is and even if we have access to any around here. So there's two. There's one at, um, Willis. Um, in Ames and then there's one at Branger, same exact van, it looks like there's, um. Twenty thousand miles difference, but they're still high, in my opinion, high in miles. So one is like sixty thousand, one is like eighty thousand. And there's four thousand dollars difference, but they are at, um, forty. Forty two thousand and forty six thousand dollars. And so. It's like, wow, that, you know, it's the market.
Yeah.
And, um, a lot of. We've heard that other schools can't find bus drivers either, so they're out looking for vans like we are. So it's driving the market up. So I went back to Deb and said, do we have to have this like right now? You know, can we like maybe wait for the market to settle down a little bit or even out or see if it's gonna or?
Do we need to? Or could we?
We just need one.
One.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Um, and she said, we could wait till fall. I was hoping like wait a year. Um, she thought fall because in theory, she thought. Um, football could possibly take. Two vans, the, two of the twelve passenger vans or three vans instead of a bus if they had to. I don't know, that's just what she said. So. I don't know. And she, so she felt like. We should probably. You know. Find one sooner than later. I don't. I mean, we're getting along fine now. And the one van that, the one grave silver van that she bought, then they might take out of service. They didn't even take out of service. So. You know, we're status quo, so.
Bus that doesn't work anymore or like, I mean, if we just. Sat on it for, I know she said she thought we did, needed one, but if we just sat on it for a little bit.
That's what I feel like.
We got rid of that one bus that we never used it anyway. We used to always have four route buses, but now with vans, we've only got three route buses.
And she said.
That bus, we can break loose for whatever activity.
And she said, so right now we have two vans that are going for. One is just a route. And one's a special ed route. But the one that is just a route. Scott no longer will have to go to the northern edge of the. District. So he'll be able to come back sooner and pick up the ones that the one van was picking up. And so she thinks that we won't even that. That second route may even go away, van route may go away. So I feel like we can sit on it for a while. You guys feel like that?
Have we run into issues with any, just any events where we. Run a pickle because we didn't have transportation?
No, it's just that, um. With a twelve passenger and then our next one is a nine passenger, we're just right at that limit. We have like, in some. Activities, we have like one or two more people. That we can, if we had just another twelve passenger van, then we could send two twelve. That's what she says to me, that's what she told me.
Is that because of buses or bus drivers?
Drivers. Yeah, because you know, a van, you don't. She says, in theory. The vans, because they are chauffeuring people, that they probably should have a chauffeur's license, but. No one's made us. No.
I guess it's a good idea.
Yeah.
But.
We're not required.
Could drive it.
Suburban, I, I mean that. Yeah, but it don't get hardly any miles.
No.
I mean, the last time I drove it had like in the teens, we've had it like four years.
You wanna trade it in?
Well, is that something if we sold it, we could use that money to buy a van?
Or trade it in? I mean, trade ins are great right now.
I'm just thinking.
Yeah.
It might be reusable to, to have.
I would agree.
Yeah.
I would agree.
Do we have then like?
Cause Todd's like that, didn't he? Yeah.
Yeah, Todd.
And then I don't even remember actually talking about it, it just kinda happened.
Yeah, some of that stuff happens that way.
Which I mean, it was probably. Oh, I just took it up to Boone for an HSA meeting and it was twenty, and I mean, it's low with mileage, I don't. Well, I just. I was surprised when I saw it like. We've had that a long time.
Well, it's almost. Do we have anything that, let's say we didn't use the suburban, um, and we didn't wanna take a big twelve passenger. Do we have another? Small, something that we could take, like if you like, if Rob has to run the boat, do we have like the minivan that?
Well, you have the caravan, but that's so, but we're using it for a special ed route, you know.
Really, that's the thing, so they'll say take it, but I gotta have it back by two thirty.
Yeah, yeah.
I used to take person, but I'm turning in a lot more. Now we just grab the suburban or something else, but I don't.
Yeah, I mean, I, I. I feel like it's not an efficient vehicle for. And I think a van would be more efficient.
But it's the van because we think we're gonna need it for activities and we don't have bus drivers?
Yeah, yes.
You're gonna run into the same problem of even van drivers.
But any coach.
But if you're trying to get three vans to take a team or you have three people to drive the van?
Well, I think we ran into that with cheer, cause I know Cheryl drove a van.
Yeah, and that's, that's what I kind of, football, I mean, you think football, okay, well, cheer, now you're into five, four vans and a twelve, I mean, that, that's just not. Because cheer takes two because they're over the.
But we had another twelve.
Yeah.
Then cheer takes one.
Yeah, we already told.
Instead of two.
We dropped that bottom that the road cheer has to be under eleven. Cause they're only gonna take a twelve passenger. And that was kinda like district football, they just said. Now we can pay admission for more cheerleaders, but they're just gonna cover, I think it was ten.
Yeah, I think, uh, it comes, when you, when you have a vehicle with no driver, but you don't need bus license. You tend to have a few more people step up and say, well, I can drive it, you know. Even if it's taking them, dropping them, we have that, we do that all the time. Take and drop them off and bring, and come right back because. You know, parents will bring them home or they. You know, a previous team is already there, you know, like a varsity team or a JV team is already there, then they'll ride back together or.
That's crazy.
Well, I know my dad talked about that. There's been multiple games that he's come back with either no one on the bus. Or one or two kids. And in fact, like he's sometimes asked to put like. A girl on your bus, just because he doesn't wanna have just him and one.
And a girl.
Teenage girl on the bus, so he'll put it on half his bus, so there's at least two or three kids. And so he'll drive an empty bus back. So I don't know.
Find more people to drive that if it was just, I just had to take you to the junior head game and then get Christian. I can come home, so I'm not staying.
Right.
True. Sometime, now that we pay for them to sit and watch, it, um, a lot of times a parent. Cheryl, you know, would agree to, to go and because they're going anyway. Now they're getting paid to watch.
If they drove a van, but if they. It's like we're dead, not driving, sit there and watch game anyway, let's drive the bus back. Yeah.
You should have tried to call Rob, cause I know we haven't figured out that enough people can come back on van.
On a consolid.
Yes, yeah.
So just something to put on your radar that might be coming over the next few months.
I'd do a little research, see what that suburban's worth for trade.
I will.
If we get rid of it and then figure out that we really miss, and I don't know if we'd replace it with another suburban, we'd probably get another mini van or something.
Like the caravan that we have, yeah.
Buy three mini vans for a suburban.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's almost too big.
Yeah. It's almost too big.
You don't pay to haul that. How many years for?
Meetings.
Yeah, that's a bad vehicle.
Not necessarily students, you know, I mean, it's nice vehicle, you know. Not necessarily students, you know, I mean, it's nice vehicle, you know.
An electric, perfect, like a electric car with bolts, I mean.
Props it to green energy.
We'll wait on the lighting, just make sure we're.
Bill, right.
We'll wait on the lighting and I'll make sure that I get that to you. You've already approved the thirty thousand, everything else is done. Uh well, the seven hundred and the twenty-three hundred, so uh I mean, the the fire alarm software, that's. Sort of a no brainer, in my opinion, um and the the backflow preventer bill thinks that's pretty high on his priority list, so.
So those two items?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve. Backflow preventer for the kitchen and install new fire alarm software.
Do you feel comfortable at all with that lighting to say? Anything so that you don't have to? Make a decision once, you know, like to say not to exceed eighty-eight oh seven, or do you feel like eighty-eight oh seven is too high? I don't wanna push you, I just thought if I can. Once I get to the numbers, if you say, you know, and it was no more than X amount, then we would be okay with it. But maybe you don't have enough information. I'm sorry, I can't remember, it's been long enough.
The quantity is different for the option one at one hundred twenty whatevers, and then option two says twenty is the quantity. Does that make a difference with?
It, I think it does, because, I think it does, because i- if you look. On the twenty, it's a hundred and sixty-five to two hundred and seventy watt. Where the ones up above are twenty-five watt.
So maybe the actual.
I think it's the actual.
The first. Yeah, six bulbs, so.
Yeah.
So there'd be twenty fixtures trying to.
Oh, yeah.
Replacing the.
Yeah.
Maybe just clarify, if we do the new fixtures, it built an installment.
Okay.
Cause if it's twenty, which we're replacing twenty fixtures with twenty, if they're going in the same spot to be, it'd be pretty.
Easy.
Cause we got the lift, right? Cause that was part of the quotes to get a lift.
Didn't you have to rent a lift or something that?
Yeah, something's giving.
Like our battery won't hold the charge or something, so he was looking at, like, I know he had to rent one for something. Recently. Do you remember that? And then since he hadn't paid for the day anyway, he did like a zillion things with it. I mean, this was efficient with it, but there was some problem with our lift is.
I'm sorry, I can't remember that at all, I'll I'll get it all figured out and send it to you.
Will he be working on it before the June board meeting? Or if if.
No, but uh well, probably, I mean, but. Even if he got it on their list, you know, he it may not be till June, July that they, he probably needs to get on their list, so. I I'll get it from him tomorrow or whatever, you get your email or whatever, you can just say yes or no.
Did he do anything official?
Add it to your approval. If you say yes or no, how about that? You okay with that? It made sense when he told me that. Sorry.
So John made the motion for the backflow preventer and the fire alarm software. Do you have a second?
Second pass.
Those in favor say aye. I will say no. Those two items are approved.
Let me know if you have trouble opening, I've tried to share it, the folder, are you able to open that folder? So these are a whole bunch of board policies that um. Some are very similar to ones we already have. So we'll just have to strike our old ones, but um I sent them on to the. The guy who's helping us with the grant, and he sent back and said several of these, the wording isn't quite. Up to like the federal standards now, so he said, I really think you should just approve all of these and then go back and. Scratch the ones that um don't match up, they're they're like very similar to ours, but our our current ones are outdated, so um. And the numbers don't quite match, so like what when I sent him ours, he's like, that's not the right number and. It's like, well, that's how we numbered it, and he's like, well, just can you just number them this way for now? Oh, yes, so it's the van. It, yeah, so these are all the safety, um the fifty thousand dollar or a hundred thousand dollar safety grant policies. And we have, we, these are required, we have to approve these policies in order to have the federal government approve our work on the grant. There's one of them, if you wanna click on it, the only one that had kind of an option in it was seven oh four oh three called investments. And Julie and I were looking at our current policy and um. There's two options in that policy, and it just talks about if you have um. If your school district funds in excess of current needs are invested in compliance with this policy, the school district. Um this whole district's investment portfolio in order are to provide safe. Safety of the principal and to maintain necessary liquidity to match expected liabilities at the team reasonable rate or rate, okay, so anyway. Um option one gives a whole bunch of options of where you could invest the money. If you had extra money, and option two gives just four options. Um just it limits how many things you can do with the money, and our current policy has just the four in it. So when Julie and I looked at them, option two in that policy is much more similar. To what we have now, but we also said, we don't know if maybe some of these other ones weren't available when the policy was approved last time. So it really doesn't matter which one, we just need to. Pick one or the other option in this policy, and then I'll put that one as the one that we wanna go with. And then I'll clean these up and then we'll get them like so they're matched up with our numbers after we approve them, we'll get them in our board policy manual.
That regulation seven oh four oh two R one debt management post issuance. That's about bonds and um when we just did our building project, Aylers and Cooney sent us that. That policy and says you need to adopt this, and so we did that when we were getting ready to go to, so and now they're saying that we need to do a different one?
And this is for the safety grant? Yeah, so like. Investing money? Yeah, well, I mean.
Yeah.
And I think a lot of it is about um like, so let's say they gave us this money and we hadn't spent it all yet, so.
What do we do?
What are we doing while we're waiting, and there's some things about how we um, what do we do with our employees' records and. I don't know how that has anything to do with the grant, like a safety grant, but. I guess money comes with strings attached, um and uh about how we. I just lots of things, um. And if you wanna look at these, just the sooner we can get these approved, because I have to submit them and. We can't start the projects until I get these. Policies approved and sent to him, and then we get the quote, as soon as we get the quotes back um for everything. Then they look it over and they give us the green light and then we can go. But um we're still, um Zach's getting some quotes for some signage and um. Greg is getting some quotes, he's gotten quite a few quotes already for some cameras and some servers and there's. Like the cameras alone are like fifty-four thousand, so they'll take up half of the grant. So. We don't have any trouble spending it, I really, we're not gonna have a lot of this laying around for very long. So do we need to decide tonight if we're outting one or two for that seven oh the investment?
Um well, so normally we go through two readings, so in theory you wouldn't necessarily have to, but we can approve them in one reading. If you so choose, I don't know what your timeline is.
Well, the sooner the better. Um but if you're not comfortable, we can do it in June, that'll just delay when we can get started on the projects.
Looks like the first one's more cons- a more conservative option. You're not, the second one looks like you're really kind of putting it on the treasure. To choose, yeah, to decide all of those things. I guess I. Looks like we have a lot more, I don't know, like I said, we're gonna choose whatever you wanna do in the second option. Yeah, in general, if you have money to invest. And generally, our, you know. Thought process as a district is to be as broad as possible. Say it again, Collette, you you say option one is putting more on the treasurer?
No, I feel like option two is giving them more. It's basically just saying. Um, see now, you're telling you just interest bearing savings, money market, checking account in the school districts, which. You have to do it at the authorized depository, but then up here on the other option, it's. Say, it actually pretty much, well, it gives you that same option.
Same options, but there's more.
But there's more. And I feel like they're making sure, I guess, more backing on all this.
Mm-hmm, oh, I'm sure, yeah.
And even saying to use an open-ended managing investment company registered.
With the SEC?
Right. Like in an interest-bearing savings account or money loss, whatever, so.
And it's telling both of them are, yeah, both of them say interest-bearing. You know, obviously taking care of the principal, you know, yeah, whatever.
And option two is what we have already, right, or? Option two is similar, most similar to what we have. Uh most similar to the existing policy, yeah.
Well, are we gonna?
Go ahead and approve them all with. With the understanding that option two is the one that the board. Showed.
For seven oh four point zero three.
Then do we wanna wait second, third grade? Or second grade?
Yeah.
Make that part of that motion, I guess.
Thank you.
Hey, motion and let's go to the second. Was it favor say aye? I say no.
Yeah, we'll clean that a lot, then it'll. Do we need to bring our books in at some point?
We usually do that in like August, so September.
Yeah, just a couple of quick things, cause I could have skipped me, except I wanted to follow up on the stuff I say on the Iowa assessments, before we'll finish with that. Grad week, obviously graduation Sunday of one, uh it's been a really good, smooth transition with the with the seniors. Um and we had to do something different, usually we do the rehearsal on Friday, but because of state track and so many kids. I usually hear about it, that they don't get to participate in the softball game and the cookout, so. We pushed everything into the day and so we did rehearsal, walk, breakfast, into the cookout, and it was a full senior day. They go on um their their field trip tomorrow, but we lose kids with state track and then they're kind of on their own, right? To spend time as a class in the school-sponsored activity, but it's been really smooth and probably something we should look at as long as we're landing on topic. State track, cause it's just. Headache trying to get your rear system done without two or three kids, kind of just get them back on 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 track.
What was the senior sunrise?
Senior sunrise.
It's not so sponsored, but.
Oh, okay.
The kids came up with this, they must have seen it somewhere, so I know I had to wake up my senior at like five this morning. And they got up and they all met, or I don't, he said about fifteen of them showed up, they went out to the complex and just. Well, um watched the sunrise together, so I thought that was really sweet, and then they came in and had um the team, or not team breakfast, but the class breakfast. And then the.
I would ask about it up at the at the convenience store, apparently they had a run on in that chair like six. Like what's the senior sunrise on there?
Well, I know some, um like where my nephew went to school, they do a senior sunrise on the day before the first day of. School on their senior year, and then they do a senior sunset or something on. Like one of the last day, like to like, you know, bookend your senior year. So none of our kids got wind of that or decided they're gonna make it their own, I don't know, but this is the first I heard, but I know Chris got up and. Is there?
I I think we do a lot of awesome things and try new things, that the senior walk. If we've, I don't know how many years we've been done, maybe since we started the bowls, it doesn't seem like it's been a long, long time, five or six, maybe, I don't know, but that. That is a really cool. Uh event, parents come in, elementary kids, I just think we. We parade our athletes down and caught, we do all this extracurricular stuff, it's really nice to to have those kids, even our middle school. High school kids seeing those kids in robes, because they don't come to the graduation, a lot of them don't, so that that's just a really. Uh cool tradition that we've we've kind of adopted and done, so. Um senior group's been fantastic all year, I talked to him just briefly, that you know, you kind of go as your senior class goes. In a small school like this, that leadership and it's been one of our best groups, it's been a really great year with them and just their four years, so. Um and the only other thing, cause I know jumping back is that the the ISAS, but I just talked to Corey briefly after the football meeting last night. Just wanted you guys to have the numbers, they're preliminary numbers, because Pearson hasn't set out the full gamut, they just give us individual, so actually. Our tech people, data people, Wendy, they put all that together for us, just because we don't wanna. It's like you have them, I wanna know where we're at, so that that's probably ninety-five to ninety-eight percent accurate, I mean, it's really close to accurate, and I love how, did you share your data? Okay, um just how it's all set out, um some huge celebrations for us, our eighth grade a hundred percent proficient. In ELA to get every kid in the class proficient is huge, our sophomore group was ninety-four pers- percent proficient. Again, proficiency is a is a bar that's maybe not the the bar that's. Way up there, but it's the bar that the state tells us how many kids are proficient, not proficient or advanced. We dug in, if you look at it, we had a lot of growth, we had massive growth in certain areas and um the sped. Uh the students with IEPs was where we were targeted last year, um in math in ELA, so we took a lot, we did some things in the testing procedure. We did some things in our NTSS plan, and you know, there were still some gaps, but we saw a a lot of growth out of our our. Kids with IEPs, maybe not to proficiency in some cases, sometimes yes, but if you look at that, those numbers, I mean, we had. We had kids with a hundred point growth, sped kid, uh it was just. I talked to Michael briefly and I asked, I don't know when that that the performance profile comes out, they take in a lot of things. I would be floored if this wasn't a really good performance profile for us because of the growth and because our proficiency, um six. Um, six eleven, um, there can be some surprises off the conditions of learning survey, there could be some surprises off. Retention and some things like that, but uh, was really proud of our kids, I was proud of our staff, um, it's one test, I told Corey, it's one test one day. But it's the state's one test one day, and that's what we're prepared, so. Pretty, pretty happy preliminary and at least, you know, gave you guys, um, so if you wanna, you know, you can geek out over data sometimes and just see kids in classes. And we did it in sections, so um, I think it's important to look at data, it's important for our parent, our teachers to look at uh, the data. Um, and a lot of our kids were, I think, maybe the best, we've had a lot of kids wanting to know their scores and our teachers are sharing just independently, those parents will get that. The whole thing at, at parent-teacher conferences in October, but our kids wanted to know, and that tells you they are taking the test seriously and that day seriously. Wendy did a great job, it's become such a just. Um, procedure protocol you have, I mean, how you have to check tests in and out in the playboxes and take, it's way different than it was ten or fifteen years ago. So it's, it's a lot, um, but proud of our kids and proud of our teachers and that, so.
Like Wendy literally clears her schedule for two weeks to, she's come to here for two solid weeks to do ours, and then she has to go to Col fact for two weeks and do theirs, it's. It's a big deal, it's, it's just so different than it used to be.
One thing I was really happy, we had a lot of uh, gen ed teachers um, that had some of these students with IEPs, so we delayed our. Students with IEPs to take the test till the next week off the general population, cause some have accommodations and tests that can be read or small group. And in the past, we just, you have to have a, a certified teacher, so you have to be a certified teacher to give the test. And we put some PE people, not knocking PE, or just people that were in that core. And I think that hurt us a little bit, because we saw when we had teachers give up some class time to give that test the next week. You, you saw that make a difference just in testing condition and spreading the tests out, test stamina. Just a lot of things, so um, I think it's a good indication where we're at, we know we have some work to do in math still. Um, our seventh grade, there were some, some things, and we're, we've already gotten on that as far as our intervention plan, we're gonna go three section eighth grade. Um, just some things that were already that gave us some planning in our schedule and stuff for next year, so. Uh, we can celebrate it, some work to do, but we've sure sat here and kinda not been as happy as we probably should be on this one, so.
Really, and for me, we've um, talked about a lot of it already, but um. Kind of just going with that, like the next big thing that we've been working on is our back-to-school stuff already, so we've already, you know, started talking about that. We have our last district leadership team meeting Monday morning, um, kinda wrap up things with that, that group and then. Um, trying to figure out how with our, our CIA team, we thought curriculum instruction assessment team. How we take some of that stuff that we've been learning all year and get it to the whole staff, how do we get these high reliability? Um, brain work, instructional things into their hands and um. How do we, how are we gonna structure those full-day PDs, and so there, we have a lot of planning that goes forward um, for next. Next full year, and so Wendy's of course a critical component of that, um. And then, yeah, other, other than that, I'm just, this grant is just. It's too me, but it's, it's fine, it's, it'll be worth it, but it just, there's just a bazillion little details, and Julie and I have to schedule a meeting next week with. Um, FEMA, because we had applied for some funding, if we would have known.
Three years ago.
I think three years, like, yeah, the, the amount of ti- time this grant has taken us, um. Maybe a dollar an hour for like the amount, but anyway, um, there's just any federal. Uh, grants like that, there's just a million hoops to jump through, and so we have to have a call with, a conference call with um, the team next Tuesday. And I think it's our final. Just to close it, I mean, you have to have a, a meeting to close your, your account, so um. Just doing some of that kind of big picture stuff, but kudos to those two, I, I wa- I stepped into both their um, staff meetings Monday morning. And just the conversations were so good, so in-depth, I mean, Rob's teachers were digging in, what were you guys looking at? You broke into groups and you were looking at. Yeah, and then Haas, your teachers, when I popped in and watched you, what are you guys talking about, and you were. Um, you were.
We had a lot of, we, we did a lot of demonstration about the ISAS data too, and, and also the classroom survey stuff that we put together, so. It was more data driven.
Mm-hmm, I mean, it, yeah, it wasn't like, talking about who's bringing coffee or who's bringing, it was like instructional stuff. And it was so interesting to just be a fly on the wall for, you know, ten minutes in each one, I just stood in the doorway and listened to their meetings, and they were just. I just walked away thinking, you have some really, really good stuff happening in this school district, and so I was just really proud of them. Both those two and their leadership and then their staff for the implementation, and like they said, you see these test boards, you're like. This is working, the stuff they're doing is working, kids are learning and we're moving the bar, and so I'm just really proud of. Kudos to you two.
Thank you, please.
Graduation coming up and, um, did you say Rob will be there at eleven?
Eleven.
Eleven forty-five.
Rob has the. Yes.
Yeah, like they're.
No stamp.
There's so many, you get a little cramped after.
Yeah.
Sixteen minutes. It's the over and under.
Yeah.
I don't.
I do, mine's short and sweet, I just have to introduce the speaker, so she's a darling kid. Yeah. So she'll be a fun one.
So my last name is like fifteen. Fifteen minutes.
Time mine, it's about two minutes.
Worked through all the names today. It'll be.
Yeah, we're looking forward to it, I mean, that's kind of the fun part, you know, that's the culmination of all of this, all this stuff that we're doing gets us to Sunday. Yeah. Alright, that's all we've got, so then do we go into the exam session now?
We'll make a motion, we go into exam session to. Discuss salaries.
I'm gonna end the recording for anyone watching, like I said, it's just me and Kim, so.